Anything for minutes or less.
Oh, four minutes or less, I don't know if I could talk that.
Wait, we're behind schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready, we can call the next one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was thinking I had to go up 2:45.
We got four minutes for the next.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm pretty sorry about that. Okay. Open this hearing.
Number five. Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Tell.
Present.
Commissioner Sukla.
Here.
Administrator Brunner is here.
She just stepped out, she's here.
Attorney Baxter.
Here.
And Kim Purcell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. The Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for review and determination of an AR-3-9 rezoning request and single lot development subdivision application submitted by Arvita Higgins on property located at 21510 Road W, Lewis, Colorado, located south of Road W, east of Road 21.4, situated in Section 6 Township 37 North, ranked 16 West, NMPM. The hearing will be held Monday, December 10, 2018, at 2:30 PM in the Commissioner's Hearing Room. Montezuma County Administrative Offices, 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Office, Room 270, Administrative Offices, Cortez, Colorado, or accessed online at http.monzumacounty.org Web Department's Planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at 970-565-2801 with questions. The file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours. Dated this 28th day of November, 2018, Kim Purcell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Journal on Friday, November 30, 2018.
Thank you, Kim. Jane, you want to fill us in?
Well, Arvita plans to divide her property, well, the site map, the 6.2 acres. She plans to retain that, and then the remaining acreage she plans to, she would like to sell.
And what, is there a, is there a line around the remaining acreage? Or?
What do you mean, a line?
Is this?
This yellow box, is that what she?
The yellow line, that is where, that is the proposed.
Six acres.
6.2 acres.
That she will.
Yeah, but then you said that she would, wanted to subdivide the rest of it.
Where, where is the rest of the property?
The rest of it is, is south there.
But.
There's another map somewhere.
There, oh, Miss, there is?
Yes, there should be map.
Go, we need to go back to this map.
If you will look.
We're trying to find a map that shows both parcels.
It says, it says her name right there on, on the bottom part of her acreage. It says Arvita Higgins. Acreage 59.5 acres.
So you want this smaller so you see it? Is that what you need?
Where's my pointer?
We need some sort of a pointer to where we can see.
The map above?
The line.
Oh, I see.
See, the line is, you got this piece, and then the other piece is this.
Yeah, you got a Potter, Porter piece that's in there and, in front of it, and then it goes all the way down around the bottom, I got you.
Right here, it's her acreage.
Mm-hmm. There we go. Gotcha. So that's what, she's wishing to sell?
Yes.
That part, you're wishing to sell and keep the, your dad's home, home place there together? Keep Dent's house and all that together? I got you.
How do they get to the line?
We're gonna, I'm gonna put an easement to, um, that part that sticks down, it's about 60 feet, and I plan to put a road down there.
Shall I have a 60-foot easement?
But, will it come off the road here?
Um, the, the road across the north side.
This road just continues down this direction?
I have an easement on that side to my brother's place. And then I can make a road down, going south.
So, will, will they enter through your property, through your six-point, some odd acres, they'll come around and go up on the north end of that and then come down?
Yes.
Yes, there's an easement that is on, um, the, the side of the pond.
Yep, there between her and Erville, uh, between you and Erville?
Yes.
Looks like that'll work. Planning and zoning treated this how?
Uh, they recommended approval.
Was there any opposition?
Yes. Michelle Porter?
Wouldn't we have public comment?
Okay, we'll open it up, public comment. She came up, have to borrow the microphone.
Well, I don't think I do like.
Well, we do have a screen.
We have to do it for recording.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
I have a couple of things. One of them is there is a resolution on this property that said there will be no more exemptions, that my 10 acres, or actually it was Revis's 10 acres, was taken out of there, and then there would be no more exemptions. And then the second one is on the proposed access. There is a division box that has to be built there, um, on that north end, and my concern is the impact that if it is sold and subdivided, the amount of traffic going through there, because my irrigation goes through there. There is a valve from the NRCS office, right there, and like I said, the division box that is to be built there.
That's up on the north end of the, uh?
Coming off of County Road W on that corner. I have pictures, but I don't know, I don't have them printed, I have them on my tablet, I don't know.
So, your division box right there on the corner of that, of, uh, Road W where it makes that turn?
Uh-huh, down on that, in her proposed access. And it's already been agreed upon.
We have capabilities of looking at the pictures on.
Okay, we just need to plug it in.
I thought the proposed access was back on the east side of your property between, between.
Well, it's gotta come off of County Road W to get to that.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
Well, that thing, sure.
Off the other.
Off her tablet.
Um, I'm not sure, right now it's not liking me at all.
Do you have your water in a pipeline, or is it in a ditch?
It's in a pipeline, yeah, it comes down to that valve, and then it carries on to my place in a pipeline. But we haven't agreed to put a division box in there by spring, to divide to my place and Arvita's.
Arvita's?
Mm-hmm.
So it comes to that property in a ditch, and then you're gonna?
It comes all the way down in a pipeline.
Oh, oh, so.
It comes all the way from the, the division box in a pipeline. So it's already in a pipeline.
So is that from the canal all the way to your place, is that?
Uh, no, it's, it's actually in an open ditch to the first division box.
Could you show Commissioner Tell with your, with that, I mean, you said you got a picture of it.
I don't have a picture of that division box. That division box is on Greg's property up the way a little ways. The division box is right here off of the road that I'm, that I'm talking about.
Right there on the corner?
Uh-huh. Yeah, to tie into that pipeline, some, somewhere right in there, we gotta tie into that pipeline and then carry it on down to the two properties.
So what, do you have a picture of?
Well, I just have the, of the area, I don't know, um, where it's proposed to be. There's, there's only 28 feet.
Why don't you show Commissioner or Tell, what, where's the, is the, where the, is the pipeline on that picture?
Um, you can see, right here is the valve.
Mm-hmm.
Comes from NRCS, then the pipeline runs, and it's rather shallow under the driveway, or under this. And then the, over here by the meter base, somewhere in there has gotta be, the division box is gonna be built. Because that pipeline runs right there.
Yeah, so how, how do you put a division box on a pipeline? Don't you put a, a, a takeout and a meter? Just be a takeout of that pipeline and a meter on it, wouldn't it?
Diversion box, just to split, just a 50/50 split.
Yeah, but I, that's what I'm saying, is what that usually is, is you have your main pipeline, and then when you have somebody split off of that, you come in and put a T, and then you put a, a meter and a measuring device on that to measure.
But are you saying that the pipeline has ended, and then it goes into open ditch?
No.
No, it goes on.
It's still in a pipeline.
So it's all in pipeline, yeah. Well, maybe, your name Greg?
Yes.
Maybe you could give us, can you enlighten us any on this?
Uh, just a little bit.
Go right on up to the microphone.
We do need to get names and addresses for the public.
Right, thank you. State your name and address.
Greg Blaming, 21465 Road W. I live across W and 21.5 on that, to the northeast of this property.
Mm-hmm.
So this is adjudicated water that passes through my property, comes under the road roughly in the corner there, and then is in a pipeline to Arvita's and Michelle's property. But, uh, through a prior agreement, they're going to split the water that comes out of that pipe, and what that will probably look like is it will come out of the pipe and go into a splitting box, will be a concrete structure with weirs, and it will split the water there, go back into her pipe and, and Arvita's pipe.
So it's not under pressure when it gets to these properties?
Only by gravity, not much.
Yeah, but you don't know how much pressure there is?
Uh, it's nominal.
Nominal?
Yeah.
I got you.
But it will be a box that's open to atmosphere, open to daylight.
Well, that's too bad they have to, that's the only way to measure that?
That's a typical approach to that. There's a prior splitting box on the same system on my property that is exactly the same with two weirs. Comes in on gravity, fills up, and then the weir size is what splits the flow accordingly.
And there's no, there's no, no reasonable place to put that splitting, that weir, that division box there with that, on, within the given.
Not with the lay of the land with the flow of where the pipe comes out to daylight, and also for both of them to have access at the high points of their properties.
Yeah.
Uh, this would be the logical spot. If we come down further or jog in further, we lose head.
Well, you're gonna lose all your head anyway when you bring it up in a weir box.
Right, right.
You ain't gonna have any head.
Right, it'll have to fill up and then, and then reapply.
Yeah, it starts out at zero and goes.
Do you still need to name and address?
Yes, please, yes, please give.
Michelle Porter, 21516 County Road W.
I was under the impression that we could, we have open ditches, so it wouldn't matter where.
Mine's already in a pipeline.
That was mine.
That was your pipeline?
An illegal pipeline. It impeded my flow of water. We've already been through this with the police and the, everything.
Well.
So specifically, what is your?
I have two concerns. One of them is the resolution, because we bought this piece of property with this resolution in place that that would not be split again, so we wouldn't have to have neighbors any more than we already have with the subdivision to the west.
And I did find the resolution.
And then the other is the impact on our water. The irrigation water, you know, if it, if it does, you know, what's the impact on a B, on that corner? Because that is not a historically used, been used access.
Into her property?
Yeah.
Oh, really, it's not?
Well, it's, it's, it's been an access for my dad to reach his property, but it's never been used until this last summer. It always went down around the driveway, and you can see that trail that goes down around the house and then back to the north and along that north fence line. That was the, that has been historically the used access to his, because that other used to be pretty wet and a, pretty much a bog through there in parts of it.
So the historical driveway into Arvita's property is down midway on that west yellow line, that's a history, there's a road down that yellow line.
Yeah, her driveway goes down and then turns back to the east, and then my driveway continues on down.
So you, you have a driveway that continues on down that road to access your property?
Mm-hmm.
That yellow line kinda covers all that up?
Yep, yep.
In the legal document, he has an easement, I just didn't enforce it. He better go down and around. He has a 20-foot easement.
Up here? Up, up here? Can you see my hand waving?
So, Arvita, is there an easement right off of W there on that north boundary property line? Is there an easement going across that, your property line on the north?
Yes.
Okay. And that's wherein the problem lies, if there's an easement brought off of that?
Well, yeah, the impact of the water right there.
Yeah.
Coming off the road.
How much space is there right here? Is this a shed?
Yes.
And if you have an easement right there, could you, um, would that shed, would it impede that shed if you had to put a roadway?
No.
Behind that shed?
That's why it's 20 feet, I believe, because the shed is there. And I guess, oh, and that's enough. That's big enough.
So, so the easement's 20 feet?
And if, I don't know if this makes any difference or not, but if, I don't know what's gonna happen down here when this is sold for subdivision or something like that, but roadway access, aren't they 60 feet?
For county, for county roads, they are.
If you were gonna go to a subdivision, would you have to have a 60-foot?
Yes.
So they couldn't put a subdivision in down here without a 60-foot at the top, is, am I?
Yes, they have to have a 60-foot easement, which is a subdivision.
So somebody could buy that property, but it would probably be undevelopable as far as the subdivision or something like, they could have a residence or something down there, but not divide it up into lots and other, other acreages?
Because of the access, there's only a 20-foot easement up here.
How far south does that property go? Do you have any access on the bottom of your property, Arvita? Is there any access to that bottom, bottom part?
She walked off my access on the west side.
Yeah, but I mean way down on the bottom of the 69 acres down.
No.
But, so the, where the easement is, it's, it's her land, correct?
Her.
Where the easement is, it's her land.
Coming straight south it is, yeah, to Michelle's property. The only, yeah, the only way you'd be able to, could you loop down and come in on your property here at W, and instead of going straight across that yellow line, loop down around that shed? Would that, could she come down, your easement a ways away from your water line, come down?
Well, there's an existing driveway that comes down, okay, right off of W and 21, it turns and goes south, and then right there turns into her house.
Right.
Yeah, that could, I mean, that, and that's completely away from any water.
But right up a close, so let's say we came to, right there, there, if we came drop down and put an easement underneath that shed and then came across.
Oh, that's, that's not my property.
Yeah, but that wouldn't affect your water if they came down that easement.
Well, you're not gonna cross that corner, there's a, there is a, her, in Montezuma Water, um, meter is right there, it's all right there in that corner, I mean.
So that's what I'm saying, is she came.
And then there's a cistern, there's a cistern right there. I mean, there's several things that are, would likely impede a road right there if you come off the corner and cut through the yard right there. I mean, that's my opinion, I mean, that's, but that's, but there's a cistern right there, there's her, her, uh, meter bases right there, I mean, the, go down the driveway and, and through, I mean, it takes it to the same ac, you know, you go down that driveway that you can see, and instead of turning and going back north, you can go straight and go south, and then to, to that 60-foot easement. And there's a pond right there in the middle of it, too.
Well, there's obviously, you gotta be some ways to mitigate that water line and diversion box, and I think Arvita's got enough land there to do that, so. Or there's enough options there for her to do that, without, without impacting you or your, she may have to relocate some of her property amenities or water meter or whatever, but, uh, there looks like there's plenty of room there to go ahead and access over on that easement that comes down from the north that. I would think that, I guess that'd be her choice. Her decision.
So my next question then is the resolution, is that not?
I don't know, do you see where that binds, uh, them splitting, splitting off a parcel and other parcel from this 69 acres?
How big's this parcel?
The bottom one? Because that's referring to the 10 that was cut out.
Right, my 10 was cut out, and then it said, down on the very last paragraph, it says.
There's 59.5 left after her 10.
So if we took Arvita's 6-point something out, then it would be 53-something, and, and what's left, 50, 50-some and some change?
But it's how you interpret that last paragraph of the resolution.
What do you think?
What's the address, I mean, is this, is this resolution regarding the, the six acres? Is that what this is regarding?
No, it's regarding the last 60.
It was regarding the 10, the 69 minus the 10.
59. So you were the first split off from this?
Well, actually, my dad was the first split off of the 80, years and years ago, but then my 10 was split off, and this resolution is dated in 96. So it was split off in 96, and the, that's.
That's when this.
I said, we was under the assumption when we bought that it wouldn't, so we wouldn't be here. That it wouldn't be split again, or be able to be split, subdivided.
So, and you're, what you're asking is to sell all that land to one person?
Um, the 50, what is it, 55?
53.
53, approximately, yes, I would like to. Pasture land.
Do you use that now, Arvita? Do you, do you rent that out for pasture, lease it out, or?
I lease it to her father and Suzanne.
So, what about the 60-foot? It, she said it's 20 feet to the, to, on this easement, to the building? So, that means if you was gonna do that, you'd have to increase the, the, um, the road, 60 feet or 40 feet? Is that what you, you said it had to be 60 feet?
Only this, only if this bottom part is, is subdivided.
But isn't that what she's doing here today?
No.
No.
They're talking about, the, the 20-foot, the 20 foot's down to your property, right? The 20-foot easement roadway, road easement's down to?
It's to cross to over to this part.
What's the easement to your property, Ms. Porter?
I, there's a 30-foot easement that goes down, that, that our two driveways are combined, and I have a 30-foot easement from the road to my property line.
Okay.
And it is on the west.
Right, comes straight down to, straight down to?
The 20-foot is, yes, the 20-foot goes across the north side.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where she's requesting to have the access to the, where the land that she wants to subdivide?
Right.
To sell.
Or to sell.
The, the bottom part, the 53 acres will be as one, it will not be subdivided. She wants it as pasture land.
But are you gonna put deed restrictions on that when you sell it, or is that how you're gonna accomplish that?
Well, I can.
Yeah, you can.
Did planning and zoning look at the resolution? Do they know whether or not, did, did they have an opinion on whether this applies to this parcel?
This was something that LeAnn did, and I was not privy to any of it, so I'm really not sure if they looked at that.
Did they hear Mrs. Porter's?
Yes, I talked to LeAnn about this resolution.
Did you go to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I, yeah, I brought it to her attention that it was, that it was, you know, on file, and, um, she told me that she would bring it to your attention in, in a meeting, and then here we are, and so here we are. I'm bringing it to you.
But you didn't, you didn't attend the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when they heard?
I did, I did. Um, she, if, if I understood it right, she said that there was a resolution with this property during that meeting, but that's kind of as far as it went.
So you don't know how well-informed Planning and Zoning was on some of those?
No, but I had, I had called LeAnn and told her, because I've had this resolution since we bought the property, like I said, because, and so I brought it to her attention.
I thought it was 10 acres that could be bought.
No, it's a three-acre minimum is, is what in our land use code is the minimum.
I think the question is, is that last statement, is it referring to what was left over? What the 10-piece, the 10 acres was being taken from, or whether the 10-piece cannot be split again?
Oh, so there's some question about her.
About how you would interpret, you don't know the resolution in 96.
Well, there was a, there was a previous owner that, um, had bought this and was intentions to, to split it into two five-acre parcels. Um, he found out this is just hearsay, I guess. Could not do that because it would require a 60-foot easement down to that property. 60-foot would take right to her front door, so that stopped that. But my interpretation is the resolution is on the remaining acreage, could not be split again.
I don't know what they meant.
Hard for you to determine, huh?
I mean, they could've meant that.
Could've meant her 10 acres, or could've meant?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
There is a plot associated.
Oh, there is?
Okay, when it says in there, okay, it's, the, the first paragraph refers to the 69.5 acres, more or less. And they agree to subdivide it. Um, it talks about, uh, building restrictions, 100 foot from the county road, and then it says the exemption is hereby granted, however expressly understood that it is the only exemption that will be granted this property. I mean, the, my 10 acres is the only exemption from this 69.5 acres. That's the way I interpret it. And it's been expressed to me that the reason, and I'm, you know, there's, there's minutes and notes and whatever, but because there was already a subdivision to the west, that that was part of the reason why they wasn't gonna let this be, because my uncle had wanted to subdivide it years ago, and they stopped that. And he had an access coming from the subdivision over there. And that was, and that's, my understanding is kind of where this all came from, but, like I said, it's hearsay, so.
Making me dizzy.
It's a mess, it's a mess.
But you said, up here, if there was a 60-foot here, it would get really close to this house.
Yes, it would, that's why, that was my understanding, that the two or three previous owners before me had it, um.
This piece, your piece?
My piece, the 10 acres. He wanted to split that into two five-acre parcels, and it would require a 60-foot easement down that driveway, which, like I said, yes, it would take it, because I have 30 feet, that, that easement right now is 30 feet, and another 30 feet would take it right to this, that house, yes. So then it was my understanding, that's kind of why he sold it, is, that was his intention was to develop it.
And when he couldn't do that, he sold it to you?
Back to, well, no, actually back to an uncle.
This has been around the horn, hasn't it?
Yes, it's been around the block several times, yes. So, like I said, when we bought, we was under the assumption that, you know, yeah, we have all the neighbors to the west, but we. but we wouldn't have to worry about any more neighbors to the east and south, and, okay.
How did you understand that, our Vita?
Then I, well, when I talked to LeAnn, it didn't seem to be a problem, the resolution just applied to the ten acres. Um, so it proceeded.
So that, that's what LeAnn interpreted this as, is applying to that ten acres for no more subdivisions, not?
I understand, yes.
Can it be interpreted that way, John?
It can be, but I mean, I'm, I'm not here to say that, um-
She's not correct.
That this is an illogical interpretation. I mean, it easily could be, have meant.
Well, if, if your uncle tried to subdivide it and got denied?
Well, that was, that was years ago, and he wanted to do, uh, the whole property. And I, it was not a, I don't think it was really an up and up legitimate deal, so, kind of got shut down.
So he wanted to do not just your ten acres, but the whole?
Yes.
The whole rest, the whole sixty-nine?
And had got somebody that was living in the subdivision, offered him easement through them, and, and like I said, it, it was, that one's kind of sketchy, so.
So you're not sure how that really is approached?
Yeah, but, yeah, that one, but the, my ten acres, yes, it was, it was, wanted to be, you know, developed, and, and because of the sixty-foot down from the county road, it's, wouldn't fly.
But that one, and I think it would take a judge to figure out what that is, means. That wouldn't prevent her from selling all of her land, if it wasn't divided, correct?
That's true, she could sell the whole, the whole fifty-nine or whatever's left of that, she could sell it all without splitting off this six acres, right?
That's my understanding.
What do we, well, I'm asking counsel, what do we do? I mean, how do we, how do we?
How do we interpret this? Um, we can make them try to resolve it in court beforehand? I mean, I could try to look at the history of it and see if I can come up with a more intelligent interpretation. Go back, look at our minutes, and look at whatever records we have, cause I don't know what, what this applies to.
Well, I, I mean, just, my, my understanding that it was, you know, been, expressed to me, I guess, I don't know, that it was for the remaining fifty-nine whatever acres.
I can't tell you, you're wrong.
Right, I, I-
I don't know.
I, I got you.
Well, I guess we better investigate this before we try and make a decision and find out if we can get, that goes back to Tom Colbert and Helen, what year was that?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, I go back twenty, almost twenty-three years ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's the safe, conservative interpretation of it.
Is there any way, if you do that, can you just continue this public hearing to a date in the future while there's time for an investigation, so you don't have to republize and all that?
I mean, we may not come to a, a clear resolution on this, in which case, uh, you know, we might want them to try to clear this up between themselves or, you know, or in court. Uh, but, but it's worth me looking at and trying to- tell you that I'm confident one way or the other.
That'd probably help us a lot. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Why don't we postpone this?
Like a month or something?
And postpone it for thirty days, and that'd be okay with everybody, see if we can?
You said thirty days?
Yeah, about, you know, give or take, whatever the next meeting lands.
If I was you as the chairman, I would make it six weeks.
And, and Jane, if there's- and if there's another planning and zoning meeting, we might want, they might want to.
Yeah, we might want it.
This one is January tenth.
Let's make it after January tenth.
Let's make it after January tenth, say our-
Let's give them some time. If, if this does have to go to a judge or something, give them a bit of time to do that after the tenth.
Yeah, you're, you're talking, if they have to take this thing to court, it's going to take them a minimum of several, several months to do this, I think.
Well, let's revisit it in our first meeting in February. And let, let all parties see where they can go with this, and if we can get some kind of resolve to it, and-
February fifth, is it?
I don't see, February's not on there, we just got January, so. Let's see.
Oh, you go to Tuesday, huh?
Uh-oh.
February fifth.
February sixth.
My fifth.
Oh, they tricked you.
It's still in the wrapper. It's still in the wrapper.
February fifth.
February fifth, okay. Is that agreeable by everybody to see if we can, I think, when we get, once we get this resolved, then we'll know what direction we're gonna go.
So what else will, will happen? John Holbert, he will review the resolution?
And see if, and see if he come, becomes comfortable that he's interpreted with all the pertinent documents and agreements and minutes and all that. And if he's comfortable with a decision on it, then we'll go, go with how John, John sees it.
And if not?
You guys find it out.
They can go to court over it, or you can go to court over it, or whatever, whatever you, whatever you all don't wanna do.
I wish that if there's, if you can't find anything, they'll go to you to sue the court?
I wish there was a way to figure out the water.
Well, I'll, I'll bet there can be on, on that. It's adjudicated water, it's not MBI water, it's all adjudicated water, so it's all tailwater.
Yep.
So that, how many shares, how, how, how'd you guys split it up?
Just split it in half.
Just fifty-fifty? Does your acreage have any MBI water with it, our Vita, your fifty-nine? So you, so you have MBI and adjudicated water?
Down on the pasture.
Down on the pasture, right.
And where does that come from?
MBI.
I know, but it's- I mean, where's the ditch that, that it comes, does it, is it associated with?
It come, it's, wait, see this ditch down here in the bottom?
Ditch down here?
It's above that.
Oh, it's part of that?
Yeah.
So it has nothing to do with this?
No, it has nothing to do with that up there.
I just don't want to get MBI in the middle of?
No, no, there's no MBI water up in that corner at all.
Completely out of it. I was trying to, I'm confused, the situation.
Might take better minds than ours to do that.
Motion to continue to the fifth.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
I moved to, or did you already do it?
No, go right ahead.
Moved to, move this, continue this meeting till February fifth, two thousand and nineteen?
Did you have to put a time? Did we already do that other one on February fifth? No, that was March fifth.
It's March?
Yeah, for co- to Mac?
At one-thirty.
At one-thirty?
Move it to one-thirty on February fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
This one is going to be moved to February fifth? At one-thirty, that's what they were putting the timeframe.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, continue this hearing to February fifth, one-thirty PM. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck, everybody.
Do you wanna close that, or is it, do you close that still?
Yeah, we still need to close it.